Good afternoon, everyone. The regular session of the Sangguniang Panlaluwigan is called to order. Kindly stand for the prayer to be led by Honorable Neil S. Hernandez. And after the prayer, please remain standing for the singing of the Philippine National Anthem and the hymnason of Tejano.
In the name of Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, as we commence the session, the session of Sangguniang Panlaluwigan, we humbled to ask for your divine presence and guidance. We acknowledge to your infinite wisdom and seek your direction in the matter so sit before us. Grant us the courage to pursue justice, hold the truth, and promote the common good. May our decision, discussion be characterized by respect, patience, and humility as we engage in the faithful ODLG. Help us to discern the needs of our province and vision to brighten the future of our people. Bless us with unity and cooperation that we may work harmoniously towards the betterment of our society. We offer this legislative proceedings to you, trusting in your unfeeling love. In your holy name, we pray, amen. In the name of Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Mga kababayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang mahili, hera sa siya halat. Halam na puso, sadi pi ko'y kuwai. Lu pa'ong hihiha, huwag ka namang hiti. Sa man'g rupi, tikapasisi pi. Sanagadap, ugo sa siyo yan, sanali ko'y pagao. Ayunadampu la, ka'awit sa kaya ang pinamahal. Ang isakdampu akawat, huwag ita't kunpay na rin hinihi. Ang ituwi na karoon yan, kaynan, ang haydi mati hinihi. Lu pa'ng palaw, ngapwar, habik pa'ng singka, huwag ngamik sa bibiko. Angin ni kaya, napak, kayo ngapi, ang palay kayo, ka'y isayo. Ikan manganor, dihanon, pasan koray, mangay babanon. Tu'up kita, simpa'rau, san kanan, Diyos ga'oh. Pasarayu, pagmuroto kita, tabubuwas, unkat tanta. Ang mayrooy, maga'ong larong, sa kabulog, birinang panao. Mga tuin kita, ni'sumuruy, ugo sayo, nga'to na ma'irooy. Nabuh kita, sa kabawasan, uminglaban ka'os ngan. Pasarayu, pagmuroto kita, tabubuwas, unkat tanta. Ang mayrooy, maga'ong ganon, sa ka'ulog, birinang panao. Ang mayrooy, maga'ong ganon, sa ka'ulog, birinang panao. Ang mayrooy, maga'ong ganon, sa ka'ulog, birinang panao.
Thank you. Please take your respective seats. SB Secretary kindly call the members of this August body on the purpose of determining corum.
Honorable Dato Clarence E.
Present.
Honorable Abalon Don L. Honorable Dorado Lopez Jr. E. Honorable Tobongo Arturo Jr. T. Honorable Galit Junisio Dexter D. Honorable Hernandez Neil S. Honorable Laudaniel Unida P. Honorable Ayog Asela Ruffa Andrea G.
Present.
Honorable Ong Najab Bianca Nicolet L. Honorable Ong Chuwan Emil Nicolas II B. Honorable Miranda Herardo Gerard A. Honorable Silvano Gina O.
Present.
Honorable Singzon Victoria II M. Honorable Uy Florian D. There are ten members who are physically present. Two members are present via Zoom. Total number of members present, twelve, including the presiding officer.
With the presence of twelve members of this August body, including the presiding officer, we have a corum in today's regular session. Majority Leader.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. The Honorable Clarence I Dato. Of course, my esteemed colleagues in this August chamber, the secretary and all the staff, and of course, our guests and visitors in the gallery, Mr. Chairman. We have some guests and visitors in the gallery, Mr. Chairman. We have political science students from UEP observing our Sangguniang Panlaluwigan session as part of their class requirement headed by Ms. Eileen Devara. And also, Mr. Chairman, we have Team Lauang, Rescue Team Lauang, also known as Team Avengers, led by their M Dream O, Joey Bea B. Sebron. And of course, accompanied by their two Sangguniang Bayan members, we have the Honorable Lucky De Los Reyes and the Honorable Cecilio Lagrimas. Kindly please recognize and acknowledge Mr. Chairman.
To the political science students of our state university, welcome to this August chamber. And of course, to our guests from the municipality of Lauang, Honorable Lagrimas and Honorable De Los Reyes, together with the M Dream Team, the Team M, the RMO of Lauang, led by M Dream O, Joey Sebron. Welcome to this August chamber.
To continue, Mr. Chairman, I forgot to mention the presence of Team Lauang with us this afternoon. They are here to receive the resolution of recommendation as the ninth Regional Rescue Jamboree Champion held in Ba'by City for the first and third-class municipalities category, Mr. Chairman. To proceed, Mr. Chairman, we now consider item number six, the considerations of the Journal of Proceedings dated September 2, 2025, Regular Session of the Honorable Sangguniang. And considering, Mr. Chairman, that members will already provided copies, they can browse it in their respective laptops. And if there are no manifestations for any correction, deletion, or insertion, assume that the reading be dispensed with. Consider it as read and incorporated into the Journal of Proceedings in our today's regular session. Assume, Mr. Chairman.
With that motion duly seconded, the consideration of the Journal of the September 2, 2025 Regular Session, the reading of which is dispensed with and the same is considered as read and deem approved and be incorporated in the Journal of our regular session for today. Hearing objection?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now proceed with the next item in the agenda, item number seven. The first reading and referral to the appropriate committees of the proposed ordinances and resolutions. Kindly please direct the secretary to read all the items under item number seven for referral to the appropriate committees, Mr. Chairman.
SB Secretary kindly read all the items under item number seven of our agenda.
Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Municipality of Gama in Northern Samar for Being a Judge as the Regional Champion in a Local Legislative Award (LLA), Bringing Pride and Honor to the Province of Northern Samar." Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Urgently Requesting the Department of Transportation (DOTR) and the Philippine Coast Guard (PCG) through Representative Edwin Marino C. Ong Chuwan of the Second District of Northern Samar to Provide and/or Deploy a Reliable Seacraft or Sea Assets in the Province of Northern Samar." Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Requesting the Department of Transportation (DOTR) and/or Philippine Coast Guard (PCG) to Provide and/or Deploy Reliable Seacraft, Sea Assets, or Vessels in Northern Samar to Ensure Maritime Safety, Facilitate Transportation, and Support Disaster Response Efforts." Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Najab Bianca Nicolet L. Ong entitled, "A Resolution Commending the Department of Science and Technology (DOST), Northern Samar Provincial Office," headed by then Provincial Director Engineer Veronica Aniban Lagitan, and set up focal person Engineer Honorely Ar Narca for their outstanding support and technical assistance to Mr. Luisito B. Alicair and Ms. Eileen B. Alicair of Luis &amp; I Souvenir Shop, leading to their recognition as regional winner in the 2025 Search for DOST Setup 4.0 Awardist Circle Award Category, Championing Innovation and Resource Circularity for Local Enterprises. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Najab Bianca Nicolet L. Ong entitled, "A Resolution Commending Luis &amp; I Souvenir Shop," represented by Mr. Luisito B. Alicair and Ms. Eileen B. Alicair of Barangay Jose Abad Santos, Catarman, Northern Samar, for being awarded as the regional winner in the 2025 Search for DOST Setup 4.0 Awardist Circle Award Category, Championing Innovation and Resource Circularity for Local Enterprises. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Bobon, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Renee A. Celispara for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Catarman, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Diane E. Rosales for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Katubig, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Solomon G. Vicencio for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Gama in Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Timoteo T. Kapukian Jr. for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Lauang, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Charlene L. Ong Chuwan for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Lapinig, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Romaldo A. Minzon Jr. for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of La Visari, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Edito B. Salodaga for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Papanas, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Ron Michael L. Tejano for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Bondrago, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Mario M. Madera for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Palapag, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Florencio A. Batula for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of Pambuha, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Owen Lomberto L. Shervo for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of San Antonio, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Gary M. Lavien for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of San Isidro, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Condado G. Avila Senior for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champion. Proposed Resolution is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "A Resolution Commending and Congratulating the Local Government Unit of San Rock, Northern Samar," headed by Mayor Maria Ana G. Abalon for being recognized by the Department of the Interior and Local Government (DILG) as one of the CY 2025 Local Governance Champions.
Thank you, SB Secretary. All the proposed resolutions of commendation, twenty of them, are hereby referred to the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, before I proceed, I'd like, I move that the Honorable Unida Pilaudenio be recognized as present in our session. And kindly please direct the secretary to include the Honorable Unida Pilaudenio in the records of attendance of Mr. Chairman.
SB Secretary kindly take note of that, the presence of Honorable Unida Pilaudenio in our regular session for today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now proceed, Mr. Chairman. Under item number eight in the agenda, the Committee Report. First committee, scheduled to render its committee report. We have the Committee on Trade, Industry, and Economic Affairs. The subject ordinance is sponsored by the Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "An Ordinance Approving and Implementing the Paleng QR PH+ Program in the Province of Northern Samar in Joining Business Establishments and Local Transportation to Adopt QR PH+ Digital Payments and for Other Purposes." Kindly please recognize the Honorable Emil Nicolas B. Ong Chuwan to render the committee report.
Honorable Emil Nicolas B. Ong Chuwan II is recognized.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Chairman of the Committee on Trade, Industry, and Economic Affairs, I move to adopt the committee report on proposed ordinance sponsored by Honorable Don L. Abalon entitled, "An Ordinance Approving and Implementing the Paleng QR PH+ Program in the Province of Northern Samar in Joining Business Establishments and Local Transportation to Adopt PH+ Digital Payments and for Other Purposes." Given that every member of this August body has a copy of the committee report, this committee recommends and respectfully moves for the adoption of this committee report and to calendar for second reading the proposed ordinance submitted for approval this fourteenth day of November, 2025. Assume, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There's a motion which is duly seconded for the adoption of the committee report of the Committee on Trade, Industry, and Economic Affairs and to calendar the same for second reading, the proposed ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving and Implementing the Paleng QR PH+ Program in the Province of Northern Samar in Joining Business Establishments and Local Transportation to Adopt PH+ Digital Payments and for Other Purposes." Hearing objection? Said motion is hereby approved. Thank you, Honorable Emil Nicolas B. Ong Chuwan II, Chairman, Committee on Trade, Industry, and Economic Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now proceed with item number nine, the Calendar of Business. Under item number nine, we have this letter A, the presentation of Sangguniang Panlaluwigan Resolution Number 412 Series of 2025. This is a resolution sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicolas B. Ong Chuwan II entitled, "A Resolution Commending the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Samar" for emerging as champion in the first to third-class municipalities category during the 19th Regional Rescue Jamboree held in Ba'by City, Leyte in the celebration of National Disaster Resilience Month. Mr. Chairman, to read and present the resolution of commendation, kindly please recognize the sponsor of said resolution, the Honorable Emil Nicolas B. Ong Chuwan II, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Emil Nicolas B. Ong Chuwan II is recognized.
Majority Floor Leader, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may be allowed to read the whole resolution as we have guests from Team Lauang, M Dream O, accompanied by my fellow SB member, Honorable Lucky De Los Reyes and Honorable Cecilio Y. Lagrimas.
You may proceed.
Okay. SB Resolution Number 412 Series of 2025, "A Resolution Commending the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Samar" for emerging as champion in the first to third-class municipalities category during the 19th Regional Rescue Jamboree held in Ba'by City, Leyte in celebration of the National Disaster Resilience Month. Whereas, the 19th Regional Rescue Jamboree was held from July 14, 2025 at the Binay Bayon Convention Center in Ba'by City, Province of Leyte in observance of the National Disaster Resilience Month. Whereas, the event gathered over 1,000 participants from regions across the country, including disaster responders, uniformed personnel, local government officials, youth leaders, and volunteers. Whereas, the jamboree spearheaded by the Office of Civil Defense, Region 8, under the leadership of Regional Director Lord Byron Torre Carion, aims to improve the capabilities of responders and rescuers, ensuring a more prepared, responsive, and resilient disaster response system. Whereas, the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Samar Rescue Team displayed exceptional skill in the first to third-class municipalities category, besting other highly capable rescue units from across the region. Whereas, this remarkable achievement not only brings honor and pride to the Municipality of Lauang, but also highlights the commitment of its local government, responders, and community members in advancing disaster preparedness and resilience. Whereas, the Sangguniang Panlaluwigan of Northern Samar recognizes the importance of commending and honoring such exemplary feats which serves as an inspiration for other municipalities in the province to strengthen their disaster risk reduction and management initiatives. resolves as it is hereby resolved to commend that is hereby commenced the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Samar for emerging as champion in the first to third-class municipalities category during the 19th Regional Rescue Jamboree held in Ba'by City, Leyte in celebration of National Disaster Resilience Month. Resolve finally that copies of this resolution be furnished to the Honorable Mayor of Lauang, Northern Samar, the Lauang Rescue Team, the Office of Civil Defense, Region 8, and all other concerned for their information and guidance. Adopted by the Sangguniang Panlaluwigan in session assembled last eighteenth day of August, 2025, Catarman, Northern Samar.
Thank you, Honorable Emil Nicolas B. Ong Chuwan II. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before I move for a few minutes suspension, kindly please again recognize another member for inclusion of our record of attendance, the Honorable Junisio Dexter de Galit, Mr. Chairman.
SB Secretary kindly take note of, and including the presence of, in our records, the presence of Honorable Junisio Dexter de Galit in our regular session for today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To proceed, Mr. Chairman. Before I proceed, Mr. Chairman, the Honorable... the Honorable Lopez Dorado would like to be recognized.
Honorable Lopez Dorado Jr. is recognized.
Mr. Chair, considering that this representation is a chairman of the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction and Management, if the gentleman from Lauang yield to be one of his co-sponsors of this resolution, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chairman, the parliamentary status, the, the resolution has already been presented and approved. So maybe for the next recommendation or resolution in the future, Mr. Chairman, it can be the Honorable...
Yes, with that, this is, this is already approved, and now it's just a presentation.
Yes, this is only a present...
Thank you.
Of this resolution recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so I withdrawing my proposal and be me next time. Thank you.
Thank you, duly noted. Thank you, Honorable Lopez Dorado Jr.
Again, Mr. Chairman, for the formal, formal presentation of the resolution of commendation as is sponsored by, as read and sponsored by the Honorable Emil Nicolas Biang Chuhan II, is to move for a few minutes' suspension.
Session suspended.
Still under the Calendar of Business, we now proceed in item is letter B, ordinance scheduled on second reading. We have an ordinance authored by the Honorable Lopez Dorado Jr., an ordinance prescribing the immediate planning and implementation of comprehensive drainage systems by all local government units in the Province of Northern Samar to address flooding, public health issues, and climate induced hazard. Mr. Chairman, parliamentary status is for interpolation, debate, and amendment. Mr. Chairman, can you please recognize the principal sponsor, the Honorable Lopez Dorado Jr., Mr. Chairman?
Honorable Lopez Dorado Jr. is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the indulgence of our August body, this presentation is now willing to entertain interpolation, debates, and possible amendments of my proposed ordinance.
The floor is now open for interpolation. So any member wishes to interpolate? Here now in second reading.
Mr. Chairman, there are two members who'd like wishes to interpolate. First is the Honorable Abalon, to be followed by the Honorable Florian Doi, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would like to thanks the proponent for incorporating into the proposed ordinance some of my proposed amendments when this was considered by the committee, and they are now part of the ordinance. But I just have some clarificatory questions that I would like to profound, Mr. Chair, in order to prevent any misunderstanding or misinterpretation of the provisions of the ordinance as it will be implemented later on once the same is approved. Now, on, on section five, on the scope of, of scope and coverage, I, I just would like to ask as to which one will shoulder the expenses for the preparation and, and design of the comprehensive drainage system plan? Will it be the provincial government or the municipal government concerned? That, that would be my first question, Mr. Chair. And are these expenses allowed to be incorporated into the Economic Development Fund of the local government unit concerned? Meaning, can this be charged to the 20% Economic Development Fund of the local government unit concerned?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Honorable Don Abalon. So, Mr. Chair, in response to the concern on who will shoulder the expenses for the preparation of design of the CDSP, this ordinance recognizes that each local government unit shall be primarily responsible for the formulation of its own CDSP consistent with its comprehensive land use plan and local climate change action plan. The cost, Mr. Chair, of the preparation and design may be charged to 20% EDF under the LGU's annual investment plan as the project directly addresses climate change adaptability, disaster risk reduction, and public infrastructure development. All allowable expenditures, Mr. Chair, under the ILG DBM Joint Memorandum Circular Number One, Series of 2017, and during our, maybe Memorandum Circular Number One, Series of 2017, your, Mr. Chair. And but during our committee hearing, it was also stated by the representative from DPWH and the DNR that the topographic survey can be charged, can be free of charge, but in coordination with the respective LGUs to the office concerned. And moreover, Mr. Chair, to reduce the financial burden on smaller municipalities, the provincial government may provide technical assistance through the Provincial Engineering Office, the PEO, the Provincial Planning and Development Office, and the Provincial Risk Reduction and Management Office, Federal MO. The province can also mobilize external funding, support from the national agencies such as the DPWH, DILG, DNR, or even through NIDA's Local Infrastructure Program, as well as seek grant from the Climate Resilience Funds and international donors. In terms of cost, Mr. Chair, the ordinance only mandates the preparation of the plan, not the immediate implementation or of construction works. Hence, all LGUs can prioritize or face its preparation, I mean, face by face, depending on financial capacity, without causing undue strain on the local budget of every LGU. Mr. Chair.
So it is my understanding, Mr. Chair, that what is, what is encouraged or enjoyed by the ordinance is not the actual implementation yet of the project, but the preparation of the design?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And, and can it be possible, Mr. Chair, that since the Provincial Engineering Office will be providing technical assistance, that it can prioritize, number one, the local government units that are susceptible to flooding should be prioritized? And second, the LGUs that have lower income classification?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is the priority of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the, and the second concern is regarding the technical competence of the municipal governments, particularly the respective municipal engineering offices. In the event that the LGU does not have that kind of technical competence, can the provincial government provide technical assistance to these LGUs?
Mr. Chair, I understand that not all LGUs, particularly our small municipalities, may have full technical capability or equipment to conduct comprehensive topographic survey and site surveys for their drainage plan. However, this ordinance recognizes that technical assistance and institutional support shall be provided by the provincial government, particularly through the Provincial Engineering Office, the Provincial Planning and Development Office, the PPDO, and of course, the Provincial Disaster and Risk Management Office. These offices can help facilitate technical coordination, data sharing, and survey validation. And in addition, Mr. Chair, LGUs may also seek technical assistance of national agencies such as the Department of Public Works and Highways, or the DPWH, the DNR in the conduct of topographic survey, and of course, including the preparation of the design. And furthermore, Mr. Chair, under this ordinance, LGUs are encouraged to enter into LGU Cooperation Arrangement or Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, for shared services and full technical resources. This is allowed under Local Government Code of Republic Act 70162 to strengthen local capacity and promote technical resource efficiency. Hence, while every LGU may have full in-house technical capability at present, this ordinance provides collaborative mechanism and technical assistance to ensure that every municipality can prepare reliable and comprehensive drainage system. And, Mr. Chair, if you mention technical capability assistance... And, Mr. Chair, if you mention technical capability assistance, it means it involves the topographic survey and the designed applicable drainage within the area of the jurisdiction of every municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, on section eight, there are period mention, the provision, the first paragraph says, "All local government units in the province are encouraged to initiate and substantially complete the preparation of their respective comprehensive drainage system plan within one to two years from the effective of this ordinance, subject to their financial and technical capability." I'm just concerned with the period, Mr. Chair, because I understand during the committee hearing, the DPWH mentioned that they can finish the topographic survey in four to six months.
Yes, yes.
And we have ten municipalities for the Second Engineering District and fourteen municipalities for the First Engineering District, and they might not be able to finish that within two years. So what is the significance of the one-year, two-year period, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, it is not to impose a strict deadline, but rather encourage LGUs to take proactive steps within a reasonable period towards the preparation of their comprehensive drainage system plan. We recognize that LGUs have different capacities, resources, and technical levels. That's why the one-to-two-year period stated in the ordinance is meant to serve as a guiding timeline, a benchmark for planning and coordination, and not a mandatory deadline, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, on section 10, where there is the provision on support and incentives, number one of which is priority access, which reads, "LGUs that have initiated or completed their comprehensive drainage system plan shall be given priority endorsement for inclusion in provincial and national infrastructure programs, subject to available funding and technical readiness," Mr. Chair. So, I was just a little bit apprehensive, because the poorer the LGU, the harder for them to finish the comprehensive drainage system plan. So, the more that they need financial assistance also in terms of infrastructure projects and other programs, Mr. Chair. So, may I be enlightened, whether that particular prioritization would be a hard-bound rule that for LGUs that have not initiated or completed the CDSP, CSDP, no, the CDSP, can or cannot be given priority in terms of funding support, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the intent of section 10 is not to deprive the poorer municipalities of access to support, but rather to encourage proactive planning and reward initiative among LGUs. In fact, this measure seeks to uplift and assist the low-income LGUs that lack the means to prepare their own drainage plan. The provincial government, through the Technical Working Group, shall provide technical assistance and a capacity-building support to ensure that no LGU is left behind. The priority access provision simply means that the LGUs that have already completed or initiated their plans can be endorsed first for the project implementation because they are ready. But this does not exclude or deny assistance to others. Instead, it will serve as a motivation to all LGUs to begin the process, with the provincial government helping the less capable, one step by step, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I heard the proponent said to begin the process. So it means, is my understanding correct, Mr. Chair, that as long as the LGU has already initiated the process to prepare the comprehensive drainage system plan, that is already substantial compliance with the requirement under the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you so much, Beendon Abalon.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon. First, before Honorable Florian Doi is recognized, first, I just want to, in connection with the points raised by Honorable Don El Abalon, first, the period of one to two years. So what's the difference between one to two years, two, within two years? So why not, let's just, if the proponent is amenable, why not make it within two years? Kung amenable naman si proponent.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Kesa ako, within one to two years. Parang kung tingin natin, kasi kanina, as mentioned, it will take DPWH for completion of topographic survey pa lang yan, no? So why not, within two years? Wag na nating, ano yun, within one to two years? If the proponent is amenable, and if the body is amenable to that period, kumbaga alisin na natin one to two years, naginano, within two years.
Mr. Chair, in second paragraph of section eight, the timeframe for the preparation of the comprehensive drainage system plan, it says here that an extension may be granted upon written request by the concerned LGU to the provincial government, provided that substantial progress in formulation of the plan can be shown. It means to say that if you're already started, particularly on preparation on topographic or after the photographic design, the concerned LGUs can ask extension, Mr. Chair.
Siguro, on one hand then, when we state the difference between within one to two years, from within two years, when you read one to two years, it will, kumbaga in your mind, you will expedite because the period is one, because you mentioned period one to two years. Tabi di parehasi, diba, pag two years yan, isipin mo matagat pa. But if, parang psychology, diba?
Yes, sir.
But technically, the period really is within two years. Kumbaga, one to two years yan, or two years, still it's two years. But siguro, for purposes of sight, diba? Pag sinabi mo within one to two years, ikaw na natin, ano ito, kasi the period is one to two years. But technically, you will not, not really valid, but you will see the deadline as within two years, whether it's one to two years or within two years. Siguro, sa psychology siguro, sight ng tao, diba? Pag sinabi mo, ano deadline, napatitignan, one to two years, matapos yan. Pag tinapos mo yan ng two years, pasok pa rin, before two years, honor, before two years. Pag minasok, whether it's within one to two years or within two years, kaya lang, mas mag-iisip ka na, ini to expedite, or madaliin mo, kasi ang ano is, because of that one to two years, as compared as the within two years lang yan. So maybe that's the rationale of that. And the other one, for clarity lang, we all agree that the title is, kasi because I was going over the agenda, the title is still, "The Immediate Planning and Implementation." So, immediate preparation, so yun na talaga 'yung ano natin, no? The ordinance prescribing the immediate preparation of the CDSP, not the...
Implementation, yun.
Immediate planning and implementation.
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yung na yun ano natin. Because in our, in our agenda, still, the title is "The Immediate Planning and Implementation." So it should be immediate preparation.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Don El.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Florian Doi is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarificatory inquiry, and maybe the proponent can explain further. The second paragraph of section eight, this is still regarding the timeline for the preparation of the drainage system plan. Is there a provision on how long the extension can be granted? And how many extensions can be given? Kumbaga, yaong ba ini hangganan?
Mr. Chair, with regards to the questions of Honorable Oi, the extension may be granted upon request by the concerned LGU to the provincial government. It means to say that the communication will be addressed to the provincial governor, and the provincial governor will give ample time to the preparation of this comprehensive drainage plan, Mr. Chair. So it's up to the provincial governor to give the ample time, Mr. Chair.
Siguro, that concern of Honorable Florian Doi, we can say that there's no hard and fast rule on this. But the local chief executive, which is the governor, siguro mapapansin naman eh, pag paextend na lang ni LGU, si meaning you're not doing, LGU is not doing their job. Kung after you've given, ano, since this is an open-ended period of extension, mapapansin naman siguro ni governor, diba? Mamaya si LGU ganito, paextend na naman, paextend na naman. So, meaning, nakahing ano na yan, kung unreasonable extension na yan, and there's no substantial progress in the formulation of the plan. So, obviously, kung sa akin to per taong, ikaw na lang 'yung nahuhuli, and you keep on asking for extension, so, siguro, that's my take on this. But still, the proponent may, kung ano yan, to address the concern of Honorable Florian Doi. Satisfying ka na ba, no? Secondly, the of the proponent.
No, I think maybe, just a suggestion, maybe he can add a further explanatory note with regards to the extension paragraph. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
May I share my understanding?
Thank you, Honorable Florian Doi. Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
My understanding on the provision, I don't know if this is the correct interpretation as I would ask the proponent. There is no timeline as to the extension, because that would not depend on the LGU requesting. So if, for example, one municipality would request the provincial government for extension, and it says five years, then that would be the timeline within which the LGU has been given that extension. Because we have also to consider, we have also to consider the capacity of the local government unit concerned. But my understanding would be, the timeline, the extension, would not also be that something that would make compliance already impossible? For example, the LGU asked for a 30-years extension, so that's already impossible. Something reasonable, Mr. Chair, but no specific period to be given, because that would depend on the local government unit concerned as to when are they going to finish the plan? If they can finish that in two years, then maybe they will ask for an extension of two years. If they will finish that, if they can finish that in five years, then for an extension of five years. But something, a period that is reasonable also, not something that is already beyond, that's already something that, kung sa winerae pa, is parang pangungdirian ng period, no? Thank you, Mr. Chair. If that is, if that's my understanding, and I hope that my understanding is correct on the provision?
That's right, Mr. Chair, that's correct. Thank you, Beendon, for that, sa support, that explanation.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon. Honorable Janice Dexter did that, is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I read the draft ordinance, the, as I see the wordings of the ordinance and other provisions, I found out that this ordinance is suitable to the municipalities that is not really affected with the flooding, especially here in our province. Kasi, diba, and as you see, drainage system, kasi 'yung drainage system, di naman to kailangan pag, may bagyo or may disaster, drainage is kailangan pa rin kahit ulan lang, diba? So my concern, in my own municipality, anti-municipality plus nabas, ang problema dito is, the problem is the overflowing of the river. So bisang kami 'yung ka-drainage system na maubay, pag nagoverflow na ang river, nanaman ang remidyo sini. Kasi, as we know, this ordinance is for a long-term solution or long-term purpose sini. So, that's my question, because my two municipalities, in my district, my two municipalities, the most affected, so, okay, drainage, pero pag napunog na ang salug, nanon remidyo, worry. So, sa puntah, mahiapi man kung nanon sa solution, and the most affected municipalities, which is Katu Bigalas-Nabas. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Beendex. Mr. Chair, the purpose of this drainage is not only for the overflowing river, ano? This is for storm, it is also storm drainage, and at the same time, health consideration, this is a health consideration, considering that if we build drainage which is not a standard. So, from time to time, we're going to, halimbawa, Mr. Chair, there is a, ano ini to mga LGUs, LGUs who construct drainage in their own design. The municipal government construct drainage with their own design, the province, the DPWH, that's, Mr. Chair, is without consideration, ano, kanya-kanya design. So whereas, kung meron tayong minimum requirement or size sa na-design sa na, of our drainage system, uniform, din na, at actually, at pati ang flow sa na, with topographic survey, the flow of storm, storm or rainwater is go directly to the destination, sabi ko, ano, diba? Kasi kung construct lang tayo ng construct, ngayon, magkaconstruct 'yung municipyo, sisirain 'yung sa LGU, sisirain 'yung sa barangay, so, sayang 'yung pera. So the purpose of this drainage system is to magkaroon ng isang design lang, every municipalities. And, Mr. Chair, meron tayong mga existing, have existing drainage in every municipalities na pwede na natin iutilize, i-repair lang, i-rehab. But magkakaroon tayo ng one design every municipalities, based on the approved, this approved design by the LGUs, by the municipal engineers and the local chief executive, coordinating with the PEO and the DPWH standard, Mr. Chair.
Siguro, may comment on that, no? Meron naman tayong provision here, that it should be aligned with DPWH's, DNR, and National Code standards, and appropriate, and should be appropriate to the local terrain.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So the comprehensive... So the comprehensive drainage, uh, uh, system plan sa isang municipyo, it's not really exactly applicable sa isang municipyo. For example, the CDSB of Las Navas or Katubig should not be, uh, siguro kapareng nakakarman. But the under, um, common denominator, every CDSB, every municipality should be, should align with DPWH standards, with DNR standards, with National Building Code standards, and the appropriate local terrain of that municipality.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's right.
I understand the, I understand the, uh, the, uh, the manifestation of the chairman and the proponent. But, uh, kunta, uh, mayon plano, kasi long-term naman ang solution na to eh, may plano regarding, sa long-term, uh, solution sa the most flooded or the most flooded area, dyan sa, especially, the ordinance will be implemented here in our province. So, hopefully, nyam pala, makapaggrapna ketsin, kunaan solutions sini. Kasi, uh, Katubig is the rice granary of Northern Samar, ay doon to eh, until now. Pero may damage ang mga paray, mga tanan, so. But 'yung Las Navas, so, that's my, that's my only concern, because I'm reading the ordinance more, it's more, uh, applicable to the, like Katarman, Monragon. Pero dito sa, uh, one ding oran, apaw ng tanan. For the information of, diba, the, uh, 'yung ano nga, 'yung mga Koreans, uh, one of their solution is, sabihin ko na lang dito na kailangan ng pumping station, kailangan ng diversion ng water sa river, kailangan ng water impounding. So hopefully, may incorporate in the future itong mga plans. Kasi, uh, being in a, being in a, in an area that is the most affected lagi ng flooding. That's all, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, to, uh, to, uh, answer the, uh, uh, questions or suggestions of our, uh, gentleman from Katubig, uh, this, uh, drainage system is a long-term plan and preparation. Uh, the concern, maybe the concern of the honorable Dexter Galit of Katubig is flood control because he's mentioning the river, the overflowing river. So, if the problem is the overflowing river, the answers for that is the flood control system, Mr. Chair. Not drainage system, but the flood control, uh, applicable to that particular problem, the overflowing river, overflowing creeks, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair, may I answer? Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, yes, uh, but the problem nga is, kung maagi sa drainages, kung maray nakakatuwa ng tubig, mapakain man. So, the first solution is, kailangan mawarang ng tubig sa river para di nababaha. Diba? Kasi, the title of the ordinance is to address flooding, public concerns and climate induced hazards. So, flooding is, from my understanding, flooding is climate induced hazards. Ano? So, I, I, I understand the, the proponent, the rimweni kaya mga, uh, one, 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 uh, dinga explanation, the rimweni kaya. Pero, uh, for the, for the occasion agencies, for the record, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Siguro, 'yung, uh,
Thank you.
Siguro, it's certainly Honorable Janice Dexter Galit. Not, not, not the CDSB, not the comprehensive drainage system plan, but the local infrastructure plan of that municipality that should, uh, that should include the CDSB among others. Kasi nga, uh, nakaraan tayo na, the, the CDSB should be integrated also to the CLUP of the municipality and the local drain plan. So mas, mas all encompassing ang local infrastructure plan ng isang municipyo. But this one, this is not an, uh, all or nothing, kumbaga, solution. Isipinin natin na, ang mitigation, uh, of the, uh, among others, diba? The flood mitigation, uh, magkaroon, uh, magkaroon talaga ng comprehensive drainage system plan ng kada municipyo para hindi, hindi tagpi, tagpi sizes ng iba-ibang barangays. Pag nag-implement si, si kapitan sa poblasyon uno, ganito 'yung,
Standard.
Standard niya, ganito haba, ganiteng lalim. Nag-implement naman si barangay poblasyon ocho, ganito na lang. So, pag wala ka comprehensive drainage system plan. But if you have one, uh, susundan mo.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Meron ka ng susundan, depende na sa, sa funding, sa available na funds.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's the concern of this, uh, ordinance, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Janice Dexter Díaz. Honorable Lee Ernesto Díaz, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the sponsor, in section eight, the timeline. Again, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, kasi di ko good masabtan. If the project is for implementation, so we have one or two years for the preparation?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is only for, uh, topographic survey and plan preparation. The design, yes. Not the implementation, not to mention the implementation.
But the preparation is one or two years?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
What happened?
Plan preparation.
If the LGO right now, we, I, I know that next week, this day, or next session, this ordinance will approve. And the LGO has, uh, an, uh, EIP annual investment plan, there is a plan, there's for implementation, no? So what happened if the LGO, the LGO will not submit, sumunod, or not comply to our ordinance or to the technical working group to submit? Now, oh, kasi, as you said, as, all this ordinance is only a guidance to us, not a mandatory. Kung hindi sumunod, ano gagawin natin?
Mr. Chair, this is, this is for the good of every municipality. Ano? If the municipality did not do their homework, then they are not interested to improve their municipalities.
They are not good leaders, parang ganun.
Of course she is.
Kasi ito, if we follow this ordinance, nasa leadership 'yan ng ano eh, mayor, ng barangay captain, if the LGO, the all LGO will follow the this ordinance. So, I don't know if the LGO will follow and submit to us this, uh, the compliance before the implementation of the drainage, the project, will submit the proposed program. And I think the preparation, ang, ang tagal eh, diba? Parang two years, at tapos, 'yung term ng LGO mayor is only three years, and then we'll submit after, tapos na ang ano, matatapos na 'yung term, saka pa lang, I don't know.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, uh, this is not, uh, incoterminous with the, with the position of the municipal mayors. If this ordinance will be approved and to be implemented, uh, this is, this is a continuous, uh, process.
Yeah, do you think that the LGO, if the, another administration will follow, diba? This is an, uh, negative side, but that's the truth, diba? Na, mayroon talagang mga LGO na mga, hindi sumusunod.
That's why.
Kasi nasa leadership 'yan eh, oh, kung meron tayong mga LGO na magagaling, na, uy, follow talaga, sumusunod, doon tayo. Pero paano 'yung mga LGO na naman, na masasakit ang ulo?
Ah, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, with regards to the concern, diba? With regards to the concern of BMN, so we have heard the section ten, the support and incentives. In, uh, section ten, uh, we have heard the support and incentives. To promote active participation and timely compliance, the following support and incentives are hereby provided. So number one, priority access. So LGUs that have initiated or completed their comprehensive drainage system plan, CDSB, shall be given priority endorsement for inclusion in the provincial and national infrastructure programs subject to available funding and technical readiness. And number two, technical support for low-income LGUs. The provincial government shall prioritize low-income and resource limited LGUs for technical assistance, planning and support and training to ensure that financial limitations shall prevent them from compliance. So and number three, endorsement to national agencies. The provincial government may endorse LGUs that have demonstrated progress or readiness for assistance and funding from the national government agencies such as DPWH, NADA, DNR or the DILG. But inclusive approach, this, Mr. Chair, is no LGU shall be deprived of support due to lack of funds. Instead, the province shall help build their capacity and readiness so that every LGU, rich and poor, can equally benefit from this measure over time, Mr. Chair. This is the explanation of what, uh, uh, Kuya BMN is concerned, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Honorable, uh, Doctor Rado.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Lee Ernesto. Maybe, uh, siguro, na sa isip ni Honorable Lee Ernesto about what, what would be the sanction or the penalty? Otherwise, on the other hand, this, this measure more on, uh, 'yung, 'yung side na, ng beneficiary, isang LGU na initiated and completed the CDSB. Siguro, uh, ayoko lang, first, aga paunahan 'yung local chief executive, but maybe, maybe, the local chief executive or the future, uh, local chief executive of our province may, because I, I believe this is a good measure, may, may not, uh, approve or a project proposal coming from that municipality if, uh, there's no completed, uh, in the future, uh, CDSB. For example, you, you propose to have a, uh, municipal drainage system in barangays one and two. Pagdating dito sa probinsya, kitingnan niyo, you have a completed, uh, CDSB? Pag wala pa, we, we cannot, ano, so other projects, ano, muna, na not related to CDSB in your municipality, because before I approve, uh, uh, project in your municipality connected to drainage system, should have first completed CDSB, a comprehensive drainage system plan in your municipality. And maalay mo, in the future, even DPWHs or concerned agencies may, uh, require that before approving a project proposal. Maybe, diba, in the future, we cannot.
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Don Elabala.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just additional points. I, I agree with the observation of the chair that while there may be no sanction, there are incentives that can be provided. In, in fact, I can, I can relate this with two other major plans that the municipal governments are required to prepare. One is the comprehensive land use plan, and the second is the solid waste management plan. There are no sanctions imposed, and yet the municipal governments are doing it. Because of the, there's not even an incentive in, in coming up with those plans, but here, we have, we have the incentives. It's, it's not really the sanction. Can we force the LGO, the municipal government? No, we cannot. But, in the same manner, there are now about thirteen, fourteen municipalities that have completed with the CLUP and almost all municipalities now have completed with the solid waste management plan. And in the same manner, this is now the start for the comprehensive, um, drainage system plan, which I believe in the event that one is prepared for Katobig and Las Navas as the concern of Board Member Galit, that will also be included in that plan. How to prevent the waters from Katobig River into flooding the, the lands of, uh, Board Member Galit. So, the, the, those are, those are factors to be considered. As pointed out by the, by the chair earlier, there cannot be any duplication of any plan. So the plan of one municipality cannot be copy and paste in another municipality because it has to be unique and distinct for that particular local government unit depending on the topography and the geography of that particular municipality, Mr. Chair. So, uh, even without sanctions. And it is even better to, to devoid the ordinance of any sanction provisions, provisions, but it should be incentivized for the local government units to really work on double time to finish, to initiate and finish the comprehensive drainage system plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, BMN.
Good observation.
Thank you, thank you so much.
And also, uh, if the proponent, uh, would, would yield or would agree, can they change the priority access, the access? Abutan tayo to the support incentive. It presupposes or your thinking is you have an access to funds. But here, in the body of that, ano, uh, itong priority access, it's more on, uh, given priority endorsement or recommendation to the, uh, uh, agency concern. Ikaw lang, parang, hindi ko ako, ano, sa priority access, access to funds, parang, kasi isip natin. But kung babasahin natin 'yung body itself, really, it's more on, if you initiated or completed CDSB, you have a priority endorsement na.
I yield to the, uh, suggestion of the Honorable Presiding Officer, Mr. Chair.
Kasi parang access, parang, on na agad, parang may priority access ka din sa phone doon, pag.
So endorsement.
Endorsement.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any member, na, ma, ano ba, interpretate or wants to? Uh, before, ano, um, ending, 'yung periods of, uh, interpolation, meron lang akong, ano, ano, but siguro, the proponent can comment on this. In line fifty-four, the last whereas clause, no, in page one. We state here that whereas it is imperative to require all LGUs in the province of Northern Samar to immediately prepare and submit a CDSB. So, ang wordings na ginamit natin, imperative to require all LGUs. Here in section eight, uh, line two-two-nine, no, page, ano, section eight, tayo. All LGUs in the province are encouraged to initiate and substantially complete. So, what's, what's really our, our intention? Are we, uh, parang, are we required? Is it our, uh, intention for this ordinance really to require that to initiate and complete CDSB? Or in encourage na natin sila to initiate and substantially complete the preparation of their CDSB? So, yun lang 'yung inano ko, kasi parang merong, uh, hindi naman pantanadito, diba? Uh, for consistency, sa whereas clause natin, sa number eight na whereas clause, in line fifty-four, and line two-two-nine sa section eight, encourage tayo dito.
This is to encourage, Mr. Chair.
Yun lang ang natin, ano, uh, what's the comment of the body? Kasi kung mas, ano tayo, palitan natin, encourage, are required to initiate and substantially complete? Na, ayoko, or encourage lang? Encourage lang?
Encourage, so.
Okay. So yun lang naman.
Yes.
I'm just, ano, but really, if it's our intention is to encourage
Yes, Mr. Chair. Yes. I yield to the, uh, proposal of the.
That's the end of the body.
Mr. Chair.
Encourage na talaga.
Encourage, Mr. Chair, yes. Thank you, thank you for the proposed amendment.
Any member na, uh, wants to interpolate? None, hearing none, uh, what's the pleasure? Majority Leader of the Proponent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering that, uh, the manifestation of the members participating during the period of interpolation, and so far, no, no members would like to interpolate, I move that the period of interpolation be, uh, I move that the, the period of interpolation, uh, be closed and now consider the, under the period of amendment. So move, Mr. Chairman.
With that, uh, motion, due to this content, period of interpolation is terminated. So we are not in the period of, uh, amendments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may be allowed by the proponent, like to propose amendment by way of insertion.
May I use other word than insertion?
Uh, as, as, uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'd like to propose amendment by, by additional, uh, under, under section nine, the creation of the provincial technical working group. I'd like to add, uh, another, uh, member to, under the, uh, for the technical working group, Mr. Chairman. Because going over the, the eleven membership of the technical working group, I understand that they are all from the government, government sector side, Mr. Chairman. Because even under the, under number eleven, uh, number ten are the League of Municipal Engineers. They are also government employees. And under, under number eleven, representative of the academy or professional. Although they are, uh, professional, uh, working privately or publicly, we have no represent, uh, representative from the private, private sector. So if the good sponsor would yield, I would, I would propose an additional member coming from the NGOs or the civil society organization, because, uh, they are our partners in nation building, uh, NGOs advocating environment and health, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield to the, uh, proposed amendment of the good gentleman from.
So may I add this to one CSO?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Honorable Don El Abalon.
My, my, my concern, Mr. Chair, while I have no, uh, query or reservations whatsoever for a CSO representative to, to sit for, for transparency and everything. This is a working group, Mr. Chair, a technical working group. So, concern number one is the technical competence of the CSO representative. And concern number two is the allowance or honorarium of the private sector representative. Because he will be sitting there, working with the engineers in the, in the preparation of the plan. Uh, because this will be the actual group of people who will be dealing with the details of the plan. So, would the CSO representative be willing to sit with them, discuss with them long hours of the day for free? That, that would be my question, Mr. Chair.
And in addition, this is formulation of the plan. This is not yet, uh, part of, this is not yet a project. This is not yet a, how do I get? Uh, start of procurement process. Uh, I, tama, so I agree with, ano, Honorable Don El Abalon. This is more na technical side. So if, if, for example, I have, I, I don't undermine, uh, the CSO, what, what did CSO coming from a Fisher Fox, uh, Fisher Fox organization, a farmers organization? But this is really, this is technical work. So I, I, I'm just.
And beside, Mr. Chair, since what is the output is a plan, a comprehensive drainage system plan that will be subject to approval by the Development Council, whether at the municipal level or at the provincial level. And there are CSO representatives in either council. So there will still be participation by the private sector representatives in the final approval of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Bindon.
And speaking of, uh, approval of the MDCs or the PDCs, can you, ano, kasi wala nakita dito, or maybe the proponent na lagyan natin na, ano, na the CDSP should be, pero tayo, I don't know, correct me if I'm, ano, I'm not, ano, correct me if I'm not correct? Uh, kung may, meron bang, ano, na kailangan dumaan si, kay MDC yung, uh, or PDC, etang CDSP?
PDC.
Wala dito, ano, sa ordinance?
Wala.
Si Management Development Council. Kasi mga plans talaga dadaan doon, di approve nila sa ganyan.
Uh, Mr. Chair, as, as Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriation, um, basing on the Local Government Code, uh, the, the development plans should always pass through the Development Councils. So and this is one of the development plans. Uh, this will be required. For example, if, if the municipality, uh, later on will appropriate certain funds for, for the implementation of the comprehensive drainage system plan, and the plan was not approved by the Municipal Development Council and the Sangguniam Bayan, then there will be, uh, we, we might be constrained in review of the appropriation ordinance to return it back to the Sangguniam Bayan of Origin with the advice that it has to go through the Municipal Development Council.
So, Mr. Chair, so the suggestion is to include?
Section.
Uh, uh. So, no, to include in this ordinance? Thank you, Mr. Chair, you will do.
Management Council.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Chair, to address also the concern of our majority floor leader, uh, the Philippine Institute of Civil Engineers, it, it is composed of, uh,
Private sectors.
Uh, mostly private sectors, Mr. Chair. And, uh, we can also tap the, uh, the, uh, representative of this association so that we cannot, uh, give some expenses, ano, extend expenses. Uh, because it's also a part of the, uh, CSO, Civil, uh, NGOs. The Philippine Institute of Civil Engineers, Northern Samar Chapter, Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Chairman, uh, I am right to, to understa- it is my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that the, my proposal was not, uh, was not included as part of the technical working group, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, it was expounded, no, clarified and expounded that if a representative coming from, from CSOs, no, or private sector, dapat yung technical, parang yun yung understanding natin. And to address also the concern as stated by Honorable Don El Abalon, that kung dadaan naman to sa MDC and later as a PDC, uh, may mga representatives then have a, CSOs in the respective MDCs and PDCs. So kung tingin natin na this number eleven would suffice that the private sector is represented, kasi ito from the private sector, pero mga technical people.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, kontingin ang body, no?
So, Mr. Chair, instead of represent from the academy or the professional, maybe we can use the representation from the Philippine Institute of Civil Engineers as a.
In direction na, na para barayan ng option. So from PIC, na this.
PIC, considering this is also an NGO, NGO or CSO, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this presentation is amenable to the, the amendment of my proposed amendment.
Kailangan natin EMB, since andito si MGB. In isip ko lang, I don't know, the Environmental Management Bureau. Gusto nila kasi pag andyan si MGB, andyan si EMB. Uh, I don't know, the proponent, or marami na tayong members na to the budget. Pero usually pag andyan si MGB, andyan si EMB.
Number nine?
EMB.
Number nine.
Under two-nine, line two-nine, two-nine-eight, MGB.
Usually kasi pag andyan si MGB, andyan si EMB, in Mines, Geos, and SIs, and Environmental, uh, Management Bureau.
Actually, Mr. Chair.
Kung isasali natin.
Kahit sa na lang.
Kahit sa na lang?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Kasi may ano, kasi may marami na. Okay, so any more, ano, proposed amendments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, may further question?
Yes, Honorable Don El Abalon.
In, in decomposition of the technical working group in number four, Provincial Environment and Natural Resources Office member. Uh, is my understanding correct that this refers to the Penro under DNR?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is my DNR, thank you.
DNR.
Honorable Don El Abalon. So, is there any member who wishes to propose an amendment or some amendments? Wala na?
Wala.
So can you terminate the period of amendments?
So, Mr. Chair, so.
Yes, Honorable Don, uh, Lope Iidarado.
If there's no willing to have interpolation and amendments, uh, having gone through with the interpolation, debates and, uh, they introduce amendments, I move to close the period of interpolation, debates and amendments and to proceed, Mr. Chair, to the third, uh, final reading of the proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second reading.
A second reading, eh?
Can I do a second reading? Yeah, with that, uh.
I stay corrected, I stay corrected, Mr. Chair, second reading.
With that motion, due to this content, period of interpolation, debates and amendments is terminated, the same calendar for second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
For both ordinance.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Honorable Lope Iidarado Jr. I, I mean approve for, uh, second reading, a calendar for third reading.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
On record, yeah. Thank you, uh, Honorable Lope Iidarado Jr., Majority Leader.
Thank you, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now proceed with, with the next item in the calendar business. Under item is small letter C, Review of Municipal Ordinances and Resolution. We have the committee, uh, the first committee is the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations. To render their committee report, kindly please recognize the good chairman, the seat committee, the Honorable Don El Abalon, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Don El Abalon, this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have the honor to render the committee reports of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations. There are actually four items. And before I, before I proceed, Mr. Chair, may I move that the committee reports of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations for the following items? Sangguniam Bayan Resolution Number Forty-five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of San Roque. Resolution Number One-Eight-Two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang. Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Two-Four-Four-Dash-Twenty of the Municipality of Catarmang. And Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Two-Four-Four-Dash-Twenty-One of the Municipality of Catarmang be incorporated into the records of today's proceedings, Mr. Chair.
Second.
With that motion, due to this content, the findings, observations and the respective committee reports of Sangguniam Bayan Resolution Number Forty-five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of San Roque. Resolution Number One-Eight-Two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang. Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Two-Four-Four-Dash-Two-Zero of the Municipality of Catarmang. And Municipal Ordinance Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Two-Four-Four-Two-One of the Municipality of Catarmang are hereby incorporated in the records of today's, in the journals of today's regulation session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and with that, may I respectfully move for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Sangguniam Bayan Resolution Number Forty-five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five and the supplemental annual investment plan for calendar year Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of San Roque, valid and operative, subject to such conditions prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There is a motion, which is due to this content for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Sangguniam Bayan Resolution Number Forty-five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five and the supplemental annual investment plan for calendar year Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed existing laws, rules and regulations. Hearing objections and motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Resolution Number One-Eight-Two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang, which incorporated also the attachments to the Twenty-Twenty-Six Annual Budget of the Municipality of Lauang, may I respectfully move to adopt the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring the subject legislative measures valid and operative, subject to the conditions prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There is a motion, which is due to this content for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Resolution Number One-Eight-Two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five, uh, the Municipality of Lauang, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules and regulations. Hearing objections and motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five-Dash-Two-Four-Four-Dash-Twenty of the Municipality of Catarmang, may I respectfully move to adopt the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed existing laws, rules and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There is a motion, which is due to this content There's a motion which is due to this content for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Four Four Dash Two Zero of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed the existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections and motions hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Four Four Dash Twenty-One of the Municipality of Catarmang, may I respectfully move to adopt the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the conditions prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed the existing laws, rules, and regulations. I sumo, Mr. Chair.
I second.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Four Four Dash Twenty-One of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed the existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections and motions hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all for the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon, Chairman of Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, with the adoption of four committee report as reported out by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, and in order to pave the way for immediate consideration and third and final reading, is moved that the internal rules be suspended. Sumo.
With that motion, due to this content, internal rule suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. I move for approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring Sangguniang Bayan Resolution Number Forty-Five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five, and Supplemental Annual Investment Plan, AIP, for calendar year Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Sumo, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Sangguniang Bayan Resolution Number Forty-Five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five, and the supplemental annual investment plan for calendar year Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections and motions hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for the approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring Resolution Number One Eight Two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject some conditions. Sumo.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Resolution Number One Eight Two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Lauang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections and motions hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Four Four Dash Twenty of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject some conditions. Sumo.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring ordinance, Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Four Four Dash Two Zero of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections and motions hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, move for the approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Four Four Dash Twenty-One of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject some conditions. Sumo.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Four Four Dash Two One of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections and motions hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the committee report on Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, and the Committee on Social Services, chaired by, both chaired by the Honorable, uh, Don El Abalon. Kindly please recognize, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Chairman of the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, I have the honor to render our committee report on Ordinance Number Zero Two Seven, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Katubig. The subject ordinance names the unnamed third floor function hall of the Katubig Municipal Building as Romualdo Tafalia Vicencio Hall in honor of the late Congressman Romualdo Vicencio, who was the first and only Katubigman so far having been elected as Congressman of the second district of the province of Northern Samar. A careful review of the subject ordinance in relation to existing laws, rules, and regulations, this committee found the following. The public place sought to be named in honor of the late Congressman Vicencio is under the jurisdiction of the Municipality of Katubig. It is named in honor of a person who contributed to the welfare of the people. It has been more than ten years since the death of the late Congressman Vicencio, and it is the mandate and within the legislative authority of the Sangguniang Bayan of Katubig to name and/or change the name of any public place or building owned by the municipal government. While the Local Government Code of Nineteen Ninety-One requires prior consultation with the National Historical Commission of the Philippines in such legislative action, the required consultation pertains to change of name of public or government facility. Accordingly, this committee most respectfully moves for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring the subject ordinance valid and operative, subject to the provisions of pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. I sumo, Mr. Chair.
Second. There's a motion which is due to this content for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Ordinance Number Zero Two Seven, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Katubig Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the provisions of pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, particularly from the honorable gentleman from Katubig. Said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, for the Committee on Social Services, may I have the honor to render our committee report on Ordinance Number Twenty-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Allen. The subject ordinance, also known as the MAEX ordinance, prescribes the guidelines in the implementation and availability of the different programs under the assistance to individuals in crisis situation, or AEX. This is a valid exercise of the authority of the local government unit concerned for so and to, and by virtue of the Local Government Code of Nineteen Ninety-One, specifically the general welfare provision, the social welfare services provision, and the enactment of the subject ordinances within the legislative power of the Sangguniang Bayan as provided by Section Forty-Eight, RA Seventy-One Sixty, in relation to Section Four Four Seven, Subsection A, Paragraph Five, Subparagraph Fourteen, RA Seventy-One Sixty, and the guidelines prescribed substantially conform with the DSWD Memorandum Circular Number Eleven, Series of Twenty-Nineteen. While DSWD sets national standards and guidelines for its own programs like AEX, the local government units can develop their own specific operational procedures, eligibility criteria, and documentary requirements based on the unique needs and resources of their locality as long as they are consistent with the general principles of the Local Government Code of Nineteen Ninety-One and other relevant laws. In essence, LGOs have the authority to manage and implement their own assistance programs for individuals in crisis and as part of that function can establish the necessary guidelines for efficient and effective service delivery within their jurisdiction. This committee respectfully moves to adopt this committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Ordinance Number Twenty-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Allen, valid and operative, subject to the conditions herein prescribed and those prescribed the existing laws, rules, and regulations. I sumo, Mr. Chair.
I second.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring Ordinance Number Twenty-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Allen Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions prescribed in the committee report and those prescribed the existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon, Chairman Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, and also the Chairman of Committee on Social Services. Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the adoption of the committee report as reported out by the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, and by the Committee on Social Services, and in order to pave the way for immediate consideration and third and final reading, is moved that the internal rules be suspended. Sumo.
With that motion, due to this content, internal rule suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, move for the approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring Ordinance Number Zero Two Seven, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Katubig Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the provisions of pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Sumo, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Ordinance Number Zero Two Seven, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Katubig Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections and motions hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. I move for the approval of a resolution on third and final reading, declaring Ordinance Number Twenty-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Allen Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Sumo, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Ordinance Number Twenty-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Five of the Municipality of Allen Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections and said motions is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next committee report, we have a joint committee report between the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization and by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations. And the other one, under item number five, is the, uh, only by the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization. Uh, kindly please recognize the lead committee to render their committee report, their joint committee report, the Honorable Janisio Dexter Deasis Galit from the Municipality of Katubig Northern Samar.
Honorable Janisio Dexter De Galit is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Majority Leader. Uh, on Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization, with the Committee on Finance, Budget, Appropriation, Joint Committee Report. Subject, Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Eighteen of the Municipality of Catarmang, this province, entitled an ordinance reclassifying, reclassifying deposition status of local legislative staff officer four, item number thirteen dash twelve salary grade nineteen under office of the Sangguniang Bayan from permanent to quarter minus and assigned, assigning the same under the office of the Vice Mayor. The findings and observation of the, of both committees. Number one, the subject ordinance is enacted to reclassify deposition status local legislative staff officer four salary grade nineteen assigned in the office of the Municipal Vice Mayor from permanent to quarter minus position and assigning the same position in the same office. Number two, deposition or item, local legislative staff four is vacant item as certified by the human resource management officer of the local government unit of Catarmang. Number three, the enactment of the subject ordinance is well within the power of authority of the LGO to design, approve, and implement the organizational structure and staffing pattern pursuant to Section Thirty-Six of the Local Government Code of Nineteen Ninety-One. Number three, local finance committee in its second endorsement dated twenty-eight October Twenty-Twenty-Five has recommended declaring the subject ordinance operative, which is this committee's concord. Provided however, that the implementation of the same shall be in accordance with the provision of Civil Service Commission Memorandum Circular Number Twelve, Series of Twenty-Twenty-Two, on the guidelines and standards in establishing of organizational structure and staffing patterns of the local government units. Recommendation, both committees, and I read, this committee respectfully recommends to the Sangguniang Padalawigan that a resolution be passed to declare subject ordinance number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash, is last, Dash Twenty-Five Dash Eighteen of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the aforementioned conditions. Submitted for resolution the fourteenth day of November Twenty-Twenty-Five, Catarmang Northern Samar, signed by this representation as Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, signed, Honorable Don El Abalon, Chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriation, signed, Honorable Unida Pilaudenio, Vice Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, signed by Honorable Florian Di Uy, Member of the Committee on Civil Service, and signed by Victoria Marino Singhson the Second, Member, Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the passage of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Two Five Dash One Eight of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions stated in the committee report. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Janisio Dexter De Galit, Chairman, Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, may I move to defer my next report, which is the, uh...
Under item number five.
Uh, may I move to defer, uh, my next report, which is, uh, the, uh, Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Ten, Two Eight Nine of the Municipality of Palapag Northern Samar, entitled an ordinance granting additional benefits and incentives to the, to barangay child development workers for the, for other purposes. For the reason, Mr. Chair, that the committee still, uh, discussing some amendments of the committee report. I sumo, Mr. Chairman.
With that motion, due to this content, the consideration of Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Ten, Dash Two Eight Nine of the Municipality of Palapag Northern Samar is hereby deferred.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Janisio Dexter De Galit, Majority Leader.
Thank, yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the joint committee report by the Committee on Civil Service Appointments and Reorganization and by the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, and in order to pave the way for immediate consideration and third and final reading, is moved that the internal rules be suspended. Sumo.
With that motion, due to this content, internal rule suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of a resolution on third and final reading, declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Two Five Dash Eighteen of the Municipality, no, no. Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject some conditions. Sumo, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion which is due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-Five Dash Two Two Five Dash One Eight of the Municipality of Catarmang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections and said motions is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next committee report, uh, uh, kindly please recognize the good chairperson of the Committee on Health, the Honorable Florian Di Uy to consider two, two committee reports under item is letter A and is small letter B, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Florian Di Uy is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Chairman of Committee on Health, I have the honor to present two committee reports under the said committee. The Committee on Health, to which was referred municipal ordinance num, number twenty eight, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Silvino Lobos Northern Samar, entitled an ordinance requiring pregnant women to give birth in the medical health facility, prohibiting home deliveries, restricting the practice of trained and or traditional helot birth attendants to handle home birth deliveries and providing penalties for violation thereof in the Municipality of Silvino Lobos Northern Samar. Has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to this August body within the following findings and observations. The committee found that the subject ordinance is consistent with the DOH Administrative Order number two thousand eight dash zero zero two nine, otherwise known as the maternal newborn and child health nutrition strategy, which provides a framework for ensuring facility-based deliveries attended by skilled health professionals. Likewise, the enactment of the subject ordinance is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sangguniang Bayan as prescribed under the Republic Act seventy one sixty, particularly six, section sixteen, which includes the measures to preserve and promote the health and safety of the people. Provided however, that the implementa, implementation of the said ordinance is subject to the legal opinion from the Northern Samar Provincial Legal Office dated the twentieth of October twenty twenty five, which this committee concurs and is here to attach and forms part of the committee report. Provided further, that the implementation of the same is subject to the pertinent laws, rules and regulations, without prejudice to the subsequent declaration that it may be made by competent authorities. Wherefore, this committee respectfully recommends to this Sangguniang Panlalawigan that a resolution be passed to declare the municipal ordinance number twenty eight, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Silvino Lobos, valid and operative, subject to aforementioned conditions. Submitted for resolution this fourteenth day of November year twenty twenty five. Signed by this represent, by this representation as chairperson and members Honorable Arturo Dubongo and Honorable Leonida Laudenyo. If there are no questions or manifestations, I move to adopt this committee report.
There's a motion, which is duly seconded for the adoption of the committee report and for the passage of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number twenty eight, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Silvino Lobos Northern Samar, valid and operative subject to the conditions as prescribed in the committee report, particularly the legal opinion from the Northern Samar Regional Office and the DOH Administrative Order number two thousand eight dash zero zero two nine and to pertinent laws, rules and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second committee report. The Committee on Health, to which was referred municipal ordinance number six nine nine, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Lauang Northern Samar, entitled ordinance approving the upgrade of RHU Lauang and operate as a primary care facility. Has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to this August body within the following findings and observations. The committee found that the subject ordinance is consistent with the section fifteen, Article two of the nineteen eighty seven Philippine Constitution, which mandates the state to protect and promote the right to help of the people and instill health consciousness among them. The enactment of the subject ordinance is a valid exercise of the legislative power of the Sangguniang Bayan as prescribed under the Republic Act seventy one sixty, particularly section sixteen and section seventeen thereof. Provided however, that the aforementioned municipality shall comply with the DOH Administrative Order number one five zero, series of two thousand four, section ten, which is the requirements and procedures for application of permit and license specifically in change of classification. Provided further, that the said primary healthcare facility shall secure Department of Health license to operate and must be compliant at all times with the licensing standards and requirements set forth by the Health Facilities and Services Regulatory Bureau and Food and Drug Administration pursuant to DOH Administrative Order number twenty twenty dash zero zero four seven, which is the general guidelines. Wherefore, this committee respectfully recommends to this Sangguniang Panlalawigan that a resolution be passed to declare the municipal ordinance number six nine nine series of two thousand twenty five of the Municipality of Lauang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to aforementioned conditions, pertinent laws, rules and regulations. Submitted for a resolution this fourteenth day of November twenty twenty five Katarman Northern Samar, signed by this representation as Chairperson of the Committee on Health and members Honorable Arturo Dubongo and Honorable Leonida Laudenyo. If there are no questions and or manifestations, I move to adopt this committee report.
Second.
There's a motion, which is duly seconded for the passage of a resolution. Declaring municipal ordinance number six nine nine series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Lauang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as prescribed in the committee report and pertinent laws, rules and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Florian Di Uy, Chairperson, Committee on Health. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the two committee reports by the Committee on Health and in order to pave the way for its consideration and third and final reading, is moved that the internal rules be suspended.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, move for the approval of a resolution and third and final reading, declaring municipal ordinance number twenty eight, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Silvino Lobos Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject some conditions. Sumoob, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion, which is duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number twenty eight, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Silvino Lobos Northern Samar, valid and operative subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. Move for the approval of a resolution and third and final reading, declaring municipal ordinance number six nine nine, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Lauang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject some conditions, and other pertinent laws, rules and regulations.
There's a motion, which is duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution. Declaring municipal ordinance number six nine nine, series of twenty twenty five of the Municipality of Lauang Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Still under the municipal review of ordinances and resolution. Next committee scheduled to render this committee report is the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction Management. Kindly please recognize the good chairman of said committee, the Honorable Lopez E. Durado Junior, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Lopez E. Durado Junior is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Mr. Chair, esteemed colleague of this August body, I have the honor to report to you and behalf of the Committee on Disaster Risk Management, to which was SB ordinance number two, twenty twenty five dash twenty seven of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Samar, entitled an ordinance institutionalizing the municipal disaster risk reduction and management system of Rosario, establishing structures, defining functions, instituting evacuation plans, including preemptive enforced evacuation protocols and aligning with the national standards, including the GAWAT Galasag Seal of Excellence Framework, has considered the same and has the honor to report the back to the Sangguniang Panlalawigan with the following findings and observations. The subject ordinance was enacted to institutional, institutionalize the municipal disaster risk reduction management system of Rosario, establishing structures, defining functions, institu, instituting evacuation plans, including preemptive enforced evacuation protocols and aligning with national standards, including the GAWAT Galasag Seal of Excellence Framework. The institutionalization of the Municipal Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, MDRRMO, local DRM Council and related mechanism is essential, essential to the achieving resilience, preparedness and exclusive recovery. The said ordinance is supported by the General Welfare and Legislative Provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety one and the mandate of the Republic Act one zero one two one on disaster risk reduction and other pertaining, pertinent laws, rules and regulations. This committee submits to the same ordinance not only complies, but with the national policy, but also reinforces local resilience, public safety and proactive risk management. Wherefore, this committee most respectfully recommends to the Sangguniang Panlalawigan that a resolution be passed declaring ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty seven of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Samar, valid and operative subject to existing laws, rules and regulation, without prejudice to the subsequent declaration that may be made by competent authorities or any provision therein being unconstitutional and lawful ultra various on or inoperative. Submitted for resolution this fourteenth day of November twenty twenty five at Katarman Northern Samar, signed by this representation, Honorable Lopez Durado Junior as Chairman, signed Honorable Ner Is Hernandez as Vice Chairman, signed Honorable Don El Abalon, Member, Honorable Victoria Im Singson, Member, and Honorable Emil Nicolas Biung Chuwan the Second, Member. With this, Mr. Chair, I sumoob for the adoption of this committee report.
Second.
There's a motion, duly seconded for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution. Declaring ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two seven of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Samar, valid and operative subject to existing laws, rules and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Lopez E. Durado Junior, Chairperson, Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction Management. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report as reported out by the Committee on Disaster Risk Reduction Management, and in order to pave the way for its consideration on the third and final reading, is moved that the internal rules be suspended.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, move for the approval of a resolution and third and final, final reading, declaring SB ordinance number twenty twenty five dash twenty seven of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Samar, valid and operative subject to existing laws, rules and regulations without prejudice to the subsequent declaration that may be made by competent authorities of any provision therein being unconstitutional and lawful ultra various or inoperative. Sumoob.
There's a motion duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two seven of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, for the committee report of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources and Climate Change Adaptation, kindly please recognize the good chairman of said committee, the Honorable Arturo Tobias Dubongo Junior.
Before the presentation of Honorable Arturo Dubongo Junior, it's a five-minute recess. Session suspended.
I'd like to refresh my manifestation. Actually, Mr. Chairman, there are two committee reports, both chaired by the Honorable Arturo Tobias Dubongo Jr. We have the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change Adaptation, and by the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Rural Development. Can you please again recognize the good chairman of both committees mentioned by this representation?
Honorable Arturo Tobias Dubongo Jr., certified.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. For and in behalf of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change Adaptation, I have the honor to report two committee reports. First, an ordinance declaring a day in the month of March as Arbor Day in the Municipality of San Roque and shall be celebrated simultaneous simultaneously with Paglinis ng Kapaligiran para sa kabataan and for other purposes, with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative, considering that the same is within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan pursuant to Section 16 or the General Welfare Clause of Republic Act Number 7160 and Rule 4 of the Implementing Rules and Regulations of Republic Act Number 10176, otherwise known as the Arbor Day Act of 2012, mandating local government units to organize annual tree planting activities. Submitted for resolution this 14th day of November 2025, Catarma Northern Summer, signed by this representation as Chairman, Honorable Yunita Laudeño as Vice Chairman and Members, Honorable Lopez I Dorado Jr., Honorable Heraldo Miranda A. Miranda, and Honorable Victorio M. Singson II. I therefore move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Another. There is a motion duly seconded for a resolution to be passed to declare Municipal Ordinance Number 11 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Summer valid and operative, considering that the same is consistent with Republic Act Number 10176, otherwise known as the Arbor Day Act of 2012, which mandates local government units to organize annual tree planting activities. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Another committee report on municipal ordinance Number 12 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Summer, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing Municipal Greening Program" for the period of five years from 2016 to 2031. In the Municipality of San Roque, and appropriating funds thereof, has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguyang Panlalawigan with the recommendations that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative, considering that the same is within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan pursuant to Section 16 or the General Welfare Clause of Republic Act Number 7160, Republic Act Number 3571, an act to prohibit the cutting, destroying, or injuring of planted or growing trees, flowering plants, and shrubs, or plants of scenic value along public roads, in plazas, parks, school premises, or in any other public pleasure ground. And Republic Act Number 10176, the Arbor Day Act of 2012, the subject ordinance aims to promote the environmental protection through tree planting initiatives. The same ordinance also recognizes the vital role of trees in maintaining ecological balances and encourages collaboration between the government and citizens to combat environmental degradation. Submitted for resolution this 14th day of November 2025, Catarma Northern Summer, signed by this representation as Chairman and Vice Chairman, Honorable Yunita Laudeño, Honorable Lopez I Dorado's Member, Honorable Gerard Miranda as Member, and Honorable Victorio M. Singson II as Member. I therefore move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There is a motion duly seconded for the passing of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 12 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Summer valid and operative, considering that the same is pursuant to Republic Act 3571, which is entitled "An Act to Prohibit the Cutting, Destroying, or Injuring of Planted or Growing Trees, Flowering Plants, and Shrubs, or Plants of Scenic Value Along Public Roads, in Plazas, Parks, School Premises, or in Any Other Public Pleasure Ground", and also pursuant to Republic Act Number 10176, the Arbor Day Act of 2012. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
For and in behalf of the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Rural Development, I have the honor to render our committee report on Municipal Ordinance Number 34 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of Bobon Northern Summer, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Barangay Officials and Barangay Tanods to Assist in the Enforcement of Laws, Municipal Ordinances, and Community Regulations in the Barangays of Bobon Northern Summer", has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sangguyang Panlalawigan with the recommendation that a resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative, considering that the same is within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan pursuant to Section 16, General Welfare Clause 389, 392, and 388 respectively, of the Local Government Code of 1991, subject however to the legal opinion from the Provincial Legal Office dated November 5, 2025, with this committee concourse and forms part of this committee report. Submitted for resolution this 14th day of November 2025, Catarma Northern Summer, signed by this representation, Honorable Emil Nicolas Ongchuan as Vice Chairman, and as Members, Honorable Heraldo Gerard Miranda, Honorable Junisio Dexter Galit, and Honorable Victorio Merino Singson II. I so move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chair.
Second.
There is a motion duly seconded for the passing of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 34 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of Bobon Northern Summer, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing Barangay Officials and Barangay Tanods to Assist in the Enforcement of Laws, Municipal Ordinances, and Community Regulations in the Barangays of Bobon Northern Summer", valid and operative, considering the same is within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan pursuant to Local Government Code of 1991, subject however to the legal opinion from the Provincial Legal Office. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Arturo Tobias Dubongo Jr., Chairman, Committee on Barangay Affairs and Rural Development, and also Chairman of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change Adaptation. Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report of the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Climate Change Adaptation, and by the Committee on Barangay Affairs and Rural Development, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration on the third and final reading, I sum up that internal rules be suspended. Sum up.
Without motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, move for approval of a resolution on the third and final reading, declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 11 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Summer valid and operative, considering that the same is within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan pursuant to Section 16, General Welfare Clause of Republic Act 7160, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991, and the Implementing Rules and Regulations of Republic Act 10176, otherwise known as the Arbor Day Act of 202012. Sum up, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 11 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Summer valid and operative. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, move for approval of a resolution on third and final reading, declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 12 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Summer valid and operative, considering that it is within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan and the provisions of the Local Government Code, otherwise known as Republic Act 7160, Republic Act Number 3571, and Republic Act 10176, otherwise known as the Arbor Day Act of 202012. Sum up, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 12 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of San Roque Northern Summer valid and operative. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval of a resolution on final reading, declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 34 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of Bobon Northern Summer valid and operative, considering that the same is within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan under the General Welfare Clause under the Local Government Code of 1991, subject to the legal opinion from the Provincial Legal Office. Sum up, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 34 Series of 2025 of the Municipality of Bobon Northern Summer valid and operative, subject to the legal opinion from the Provincial Legal Office dated November 5, 2025. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the last committee report under the review of municipal ordinances and resolution. Kindly please recognize the chairman of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, the Honorable Heraldo Gerard Angilo Miranda.
Honorable Heraldo Gerard A. Miranda, certified.
Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. In behalf of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, may I have the honor to render our committee report on the subject SB Ordinance Number 225-16 of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Summer, entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing the Sports and Recreation Code in the Municipality of Rosario and Providing Funds Therefore". Finding some observations. Number one, the said municipal ordinance was referred to the Committee on Youth and Sports Development during the Sangguyang Panlalawigan's regular session last 15 August 2025. Upon review, the committee found out that there are some provisions in the ordinance which appears to be beyond the authority of the Sangguyang Bayan, particularly Chapter 8, Sections 20 to 21, for certain acts which are declared unlawful, and Chapter 9, Letters ABC, and Section 23, thereof which provides for imprisonment assigned from the fines being imposed. Hence, the committee decided to refer the subject ordinance to the Provincial Legal Office, PLO, for its comments, suggestions, and recommendations. Number two, on September 5, 2025, the PLO came up with its findings and recommendations, and the committee subsequently endorsed the same to the Sangguyang Bayan of Rosario Northern Summer for its consideration. Third, on 15 October 2025, the Office of the SB Secretary received a letter from the Sangguyang Bayan of Rosario signed by Vice Mayor Heraldo Miranda, an address to the committee chair through the SB secretary. In that letter, Vice Mayor Miranda said the Sangguyang Bayan of Rosario has duly considered the comments, suggestions, and recommendations of the Provincial Legal Office regarding SB Ordinance Number 2025-16. After due deliberation and appropriate amendments, we are hereby resubmitting the revised version of the said ordinance for review and favorable action of the Sangguyang Panlalawigan. Number four, after a careful perusal and evaluation of the revised version of the subject ordinance, this committee is fully convinced that its enactment is well within the legislative authority of the Sangguyang Bayan of Rosario pursuant to Section 17, Article 2, and Section 19, Article 14 of the 1987 Constitution, pertaining to the promotion of sports and encouragement of sports program. Section 16 of the Local Government Code of 1991, which empowers LGUs to promote the general welfare of its constituents, and Section 2 of the Republic Act Number 6847, otherwise known as the Philippine Sports Commission Act, which lays down the policy of the state to promote physical education, encourage and sustain the development of sports in the country to foster physical fitness, self-discipline, and teamwork. Lastly, premises considered, the committee respectfully submits that the old version of the SB Ordinance Number 225-16 is henceforth superseded by the new version, which incorporated all the comments, suggestions, and recommendations of the PLO, as pointed out in Item Number 3 hereof. Accordingly, this committee respectfully moves for the adoption of this committee report and to declare SB Ordinance Number 225-16 of the Municipality of Rosario Northern Summer, entitled "An Ordinance Establishing the Sports and Recreation Code in the Municipality of Rosario and Providing Funds Therefore", valid and operative, subject to the existing laws, rules, and regulations. Submitted for approval this 14th day of November 2025, signed by this representation as chairperson, signed by the majority members of the signed by the majority members of the committee. I move for the adoption of this committee report, Mr. Chair. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There's there's a motion duly seconded for the adoption of the committee report and to pass a resolution declaring SB Ordinance Number 225-16, the revised version of the municipality of Rosario Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Heraldo Gerard A. Miranda, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, with the adoption of the committee report by the Committee on Youth and Sports Development, and in order to pave the way for its immediate consideration and the third and final reading, so move that the internal rules be suspended. So move.
With that motion duly seconded, internal rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. I move for approval of a resolution on final reading declaring SB Ordinance Number 226-16 of the municipality of Rosario Northern Summer, an ordinance establishing the sports and recreation code in the municipality of Rosario and providing funds therefor, valid and operative, subject to existing laws, rules, and regulations. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion duly seconded for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring SB Ordinance Number 225-16 of the municipality of Rosario Northern Summer, valid and operative, subject to existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We now proceed with the next item, item number 10. The privilege and question are, so far, Mr. Chairman, no members would like to make use of item number 10 or to be recognized. We now proceed with the next item, item number 11, Other Matters. Under the Other Matters, Mr. Chairman, we have some municipal ordinances, resolutions endorsed to the Office of the Provincial Vice Governor, our Presiding Chair, and we refer to the appropriate committees, considering, Mr. Chairman, that there are 14 items, and considering that members will already provided copies in the agenda, I so move that the reading be dispensed with, considered it as read and incorporated into the journals of our today's regular session. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion duly seconded to dispense with the reading and consider a thread of 14 items under Other Matters and be incorporated in the journals of today's regular session. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair. May I inquire from the Secretary if there are items to reconsider the other items under the Other Matters?
There is one item, a letter of urgency here, coming from the Office of the Governor, Mr. Chair.
Kindly read the letter of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor.
Office of the Governor, November 14, 2025, the Honorable Attorney Clarence E. Dato, Presiding Officer and Vice Governor, and the members of the Sanggonyang Panlalawigan, Province of Northern Summer. Dear Vice Governor Dato and the ladies and gentlemen of the Sanggonyan, I hereby certify the urgency of passing a resolution approving the declaration of a state of calamity in the province of Northern Summer due to the severe impacts of Tropical Cyclone Uwan as the Rapid Damage Assessment and Needs Analysis, RDANA, revealed that the typhoon affected and displaced around 49,327 families or 172,079 individuals, exceeding the criteria under NDRRMC Memorandum Circular Number 60, Series of 2019, which requires that at least 15% of the forecasted population based on science-based projections be in need of emergency assistance. Attached therewith are the request letter from the Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Office, PDRRMO, the Northern Summer Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council, PDRRMC, Resolution Number 9, Series of 2025, and the Rapid Damage Assessment and Needs Analysis, RDANA, Initial Report, Phase 1, for your reference. Thank you for your immediate legislative action. Signed, Harris Christopher E. Ongchuan, Governor.
Thank you, SB Secretary, Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. To sponsor the resolution urgently requested coming from the Provincial Governor, a resolution for the declaration of the province under the state of calamity. Kindly please recognize the honorable Don El Abalon, Mr. Chairman.
Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Together with Board Members Dorado Uy and Singson, who were present during the Provincial Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council meetings and with the Vice Governor. This representation and the Board Members Laudenio and Hernandez were raising also their hands to join. This representation move in response to the letter of the Honorable Governor Harris Christopher E. Ongchuan and together with the PDRRMC Resolution Number 9, Series of 2025, this representation moves for the passage of a resolution declaring a state of calamity in the province of Northern Summer for a period of one year. I so move, Mr. Chair. In connection with Typhoon Uwan. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion which was duly seconded for the passage of a resolution approving the declaration of a state of calamity in the province of Northern Summer due to the severe impacts of Tropical Cyclone Uwan as the Rapid Damage Assessment and Needs Analysis revealed that the typhoon affected and displaced around 49,327 families or 172,079 individuals. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon.
And, Mr. Chair, if may I make a request that the resolution be immediately prepared and signed so that we can distribute that to the different municipalities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
SB Secretary, can you take note of that? And of course, as approved, the declaration state calamity for a period of one year. Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon, Majority Leader.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, considering that we have already tackled all the the items in the agenda. From item number one, the last item would be proper. I so move that for adjournment of a regular session until the next session scheduled on November 17, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. At 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon, Mr. Chairman. So move, Mr. Chairman. Seventeen.
With that motion, before ruling that motion, motion for adjournment, may we hear from our colleagues joining us via Zoom that we hear from Honorable Gina Angsinbano about the date of our next session. May we hear from Honorable Asena Rupa Andrea Gilayuk.
Mr. Chair, no problem with the next schedule, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. With that, today's regular session is hereby adjourned until November 17, 2025, at 2:00 in the afternoon. Thank you, everyone, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.